A bunch of agents to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, before we start, we'll just open up for a public comment if anybody has anything they want to say. No, all right, uh, we'll move on to, uh, number four, agenda review and adoption.
Move.
Second.
All right, you got a motion in a second, all in favor?
I.
I opposed. All right, uh, go on to number five, approval of June tenth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
So moved.
The motions.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
All right.
I opposed. All right, uh, number six, new business, we don't have anything listed underneath there.
Delete that.
Okay, so, all right. All right, well, then we'll move on to seven, uh, old business, short-term rental discussion.
Yeah, thank you Chair, so this is just a continuation of the discussion that we've had for past couple of months, um, we've kind of started to look at short-term rentals, um, again, the council had brought this up at a workshop. Um, and wanted to explore, uh, when we initially had a conversation, we were looking at, at the planning commission level, kind of focusing on the commercial district and the downtown and that. Um, but the council had the direction of kind of looking at all the zoning districts, uh, for this type of use. Um, so, uh, this month, uh, what I've tried to do is, um, well, one, thank you for those who sent me some uh, feedback and such, um, in regards to just the, the topic and that. Um, but looking at um, how a potential draft could lay out. Um, so I started to kind of go through, uh, our rental ordinance. Um, and kind of just, you know, make updates and changes in there tied to the topic. Um, but I think really where we gotta start with and try to get, um, some kind of consensus on is, um, a couple of things, um, you know, one. Um, how are we gonna regulate these in terms of residential districts versus commercial districts? Um, that's likely gonna look different based on those two zoning districts. Um, you know, you may find a larger appetite to regulate more so from the residential standpoint to kind of, um, you know, some of the things I've heard for feedback is, you know, protecting and preserving residential character, um, things like that, um. Ensuring, you know, we have a lot ordinances that are already at play that would apply, you know, for some of that, whether it's noise, whether it's safety-related things, uh, but there's also other, uh, you know, concerns in terms of, you know, if someone were to come and purchase a home in a residential area and just use it as a short-term rental. Um, you know, an operating kind of a commercial or business use in a residential district, so. Um, you know, this is a big topic and there's lots of avenues to, to tackle. Uh, but at the same time, um, what I'm hearing as well, and you know, one of the things that, you know, at least a goal from a staff perspective is to uh, make this ordinance as easy to digest as possible. Um, as easy to understand as possible, um, the more complicated we make it, the harder it is to, one, enforce, to monitor. Um, and three, ensure that compliance is occurring. Um, so, uh, that's kind of why the first stab or first approach that I've tried to take is modifying our existing rental ordinance and adding short-term rental in there. Adding definitions, trying to cover certain elements, um, you know, from the feedback that I've heard. Uh, you know, one of the things too that I've heard as well, and I think is imperative is, you know, these establishments, we should definitely be collecting a lodging tax from. Um, and that's gonna help out, you know, our convention and visitor bureau, but it's also gonna be consistent and fair in terms of if they're, someone's using the property as a, you know, short-term stay and a lodging kind of establishment that, you know, that they contribute to that. You know, other things I've heard is, um, in terms of like residential, uh, areas is, um, you know, concerns on, you know, the number of guests and, uh, things that can, you know, conflict because of that, whether it's, you know, nuisance types of things. But ultimately, you know, I'm, I'm, at least, you know, part of the goal, I think tonight is to kind of look and go through, uh, some of that real first stab of the draft that, you know, I've tried to provide with the update to our rental ordinance as it relates to this topic. Um, so how it's kind of laid out in there too is it, you know, really talks about, um, you know, going through a license process. So, you know, short-term rental, if you really wanna streamline it and make it as simple as possible. Uh, you could have it like a annual rental license, uh, really no much different, um, folks would come in, they would submit uh, application, we would do a yearly inspection, we would have a process to suspend or revoke that license. Um, it would really operate really not much different than our existing rentals do. Um, so looking for feedback on that, is that a, you know, adequate process, do we need to put in more safeguards, um, you know, do we need to go the route of maybe in residential areas, we require a conditional use on top of a license, and then for business districts, it's just permitted through a license process, through a administrative process. So, I mean, those are a couple of things that I'm looking for, um, but, uh, you know, again, continue to include a bunch of other information, hopefully you got to read some of it, um, there's other good examples out there from other communities and the different directions that you can go. So. Questions, conversation, discussion? Anything that stood out to you in some of that drafted language? Um, you know, one other thing I, I wanted to highlight too is in residential areas, um, you know, if one of the concerns is um, protecting that residential character in that, uh, you can require a owner-occupied um, requirement, so then folks that want to do short-term rental, it has to be a owner-occupied home, so that eliminates the possibility of someone just purchasing a home that gets listed for sale and just using it solely for the purpose of a short-term rental or a lodging establishment, so.
Um, I was looking through the national, the, the guidance, the National League thing, and they, and the one thing in there right at the beginning on page nine of that says, um, the timing ensure that the, uh, short-term rental is occupied by the host for most of the year. Um, I like something like that rather than saying, because I, I mean, obviously you've got people that leave for the winters or things like that, um. That's gonna accomplish that, not just buying it for the sole purpose of renting it out, but rather than saying, I mean, I think if you start saying it's owner-occupied, then you start thinking, well, how does that work? Do I have to be there when I'm renting it out, or am I renting out just a bedroom of my house? I mean, I, I'm struggling with this whole concept, I think it's, I would have never thought that this would be something that would be ordinance regulated.
And I thought we said it, you know, at the last meeting, yeah, the biggest thing is we do wanna see the, the lodging taxes, but to keep it simple right now, to allow people to do it, because I think most people in our town live in their homes, and if, like you said, if they leave and they wanna rent it out, I think they'll abide by already what we have in place, and if they don't, and they're gonna hit other like noise ordinances and things like that, well, then we might need to take a stronger look at it. You know, like same thing with like number of paved parking streets, well, if they're renting out in the winter, they should know that they're not supposed to be parking on the street, or now, now you're not gonna have fifteen people in a dwelling and they're gonna get parked on the street, and they're gonna get dinged. I just, to, to your point, I think less is more, right now.
Yes. I would agree with that.
So kind of how we, so kind of how we have the, the ordinance as it's kind of drafted right now set up is, you know, one, a license process, so an annual license, so is, is, is that adequate, is that kind of, I mean, that's administrative process, there's no additional steps or hurdles, uh, for that? And they'd be treated any, you know, it'd be treated the same way as a lot of our typical rentals. Is, is that, am I understanding that that as a a good avenue to go down, um, and what the planning commission is thinking in terms of making it simple, streamlining it?
Yes, I like the idea of the license, um, having to apply for it, that way you know who's actually doing it. You know, who's actually doing the short-term rentals within the city, um. That way, if there are issues that arise, then you at least have some kind of record of what's happening. You know, or if it's not, I guess, then, you know, or if it's, if it's still happening and it's not licensed, then you know what to do with that point as well, I guess, but. So to me, I, I like the licensing idea.
Well, does, does anybody know anybody that owns like an Airbnb or something on VRBO or doesn't like, how, what do they have to do? Cause it's one of those where it's like, hey, I'm leaving for the weekend and my family's coming to stay there, so now I need to get a license for.
Well, and I think, I think it's a way to, the, um, log the taxes in too, right, or module for the lodging taxes or whatever, I think it's maybe a way to, to.
Correct, yeah, we have to, in order to collect that lodging tax, we'll have to have some language in the ordinance that are tying to that. Um, the license, the thought is also then we have, uh, the process in terms of, um, if issues do arise, we have the ability to revoke their license. Um, it becomes a lot harder if there, if it's just a permitted use, there's not a lot that we can do. Um, other than the police going out there and enforcing things, um. But I know, you know, I've been, uh, in many different types of communities, you know, throughout the, you know, since I graduated and since I've worked in different communities, and when issues do come up, um, they can be hard to enforce if you don't have something, um, or some kind of a process, um, in place.
I guess for me too, you know, some part of, I don't know, whatever, but life safety issues, you know, do they have the, the required smoke alarms, CO alarms, stuff like that, um, to make sure that we don't have a disaster, I guess, or, you know, or something comes up, I guess, I think is important as well, but.
Correct, yeah.
For having it in the, uh, residential homes?
No, so staff has only received a request for the business and commercial district, yeah, the residential is coming at the direction of the council on wanting to explore that, so.
There's so many unknowns, it's kind of like, well, who would, if you made them have to be owner-occupied, who would own a home and like you're saying, then it's snow removal, you're out in the, in town where it, I don't know, I just feel like going down an avenue is.
I just, personally, like our residents in St. Joe live here, I get, you know, I, I never thought about like the snowbirds that might leave in the winter, they could then rent it if they need to.
But you have to.
Right, exactly.
We don't have the draw, I mean, we don't have the draw that say Panama beats, you know, we don't have the draw of, you know, a, a spring break. We've got a few weekends a year where.
And they're cold in town, and they want to be by the college.
Football games, jump on rocks.
Yeah, I mean, there's a few, there's a few things during the year, I mean, I just, I'm struggling with wanting to.
Yeah. Enforce.
Jump all that stuff down when there's, we don't have the draw.
Yep.
I mean, and I don't foresee anything coming that would give us that draw, I mean, the climate's not changing that much. I mean, I, I don't, I'm, I don't know, I'm having a, a tough time with this one in general. I mean, like I, I, like I said, the last meeting, I said, I would have never thought I would have had to go through any process, uh, list my home as a VRBO in town, kind of a deal, like I would have never even thought that I couldn't do that.
Well, that's why I asked, like, anybody knows, like, someone that's actually.
Maybe they're like a lake home or, you know, that kind of thing where it's.
Rent it out for a week because we're not using it, like a timeshare type.
And that's problematic.
Right.
My sister has, lives next on a small lake, or has a cabin, and the cabin next to him is the RBO, and it's rented out to fifteen, that can have fifteen to twenty people, and they come in the lake and they're disruptive and they, they don't care because they're not neighbors, anybody. When it's ice fish, when it's winter, they leave their garbage on the, the lake where the ice, and there's no regulation in that county, so it's problematic.
But again, if it gets, I think we said that too, if it gets to that point where you're seeing that it's being, becoming problematic, then do you enforce more?
Well, and I think that's the point of having this whole conversation, right, is to avoid that.
It's, it's, yeah, exactly, I, I mean, you're, you know, you're creating an ordinance, I mean, most are gonna comply with that, they have their own rules and regulations, and they wanna be good hosts, and they wanna have good reviews, you get docked on a review on there, that's gonna be impacting your own business and such like that. Um, but in the, in that same token though, you, it's just like renting of any kind of element, you can get, you know, good tenants, bad tenants. Um, and I have run into that same exact issue in some communities where you get one, um, egregious party or something that happens. Um, and then the neighbors come out in full force, and then if you don't have anything in place, you're extremely limited on what you can do, really, you can only rely on the police at that time to, you know, if there's noise, maybe they could cite them for something like that, but, um, there's only so many tools that they have. But with the license process, yeah, the thought is that, well, if police go out there and there's violations, then, you know, that can be a dock on their license with the city, and then we can ultimately have the ability to suspend or revoke that per council direction, you know, no different than if we have a problematic rental property and we're having issues and we, you know, suspend them, they can appeal that, and they can go to the council to appeal that. Um, but it's to, you know, I guess, try as best as possible to, you know, control the bad apples. Potentially, or the bad things that could happen, so.
I just look at it as, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, you never know what's gonna happen, like, I agree to your point. Maybe it's just as simple as make them have a license, collect lodging tax, so you know who's on file, and then go from there. You, you know, that's just my thoughts, and then, cause like, to your point Gina, it's, what do we draw? We draw for St. Joe Rocks, maybe some Rocktoberfest, maybe when kids come back to school for like mom prom or things along those lines where hopefully the people that are gonna be renting, call it inter-residential, are gonna be like parents of kids, or maybe college alums that have come back, I don't know.
Yeah, and we, we have no way of predicting, right, like, one, what the interest is even gonna be, but.
I just say, at least for the business, cause that's, you know, you said you only got business district who has talked about it, right? But you would say.
Yeah, but the council wants to look at the whole.
And that's what I'm saying, is maybe you still, if anybody in the residential still has to be licensed, right?
Sure. What all comes with that license, was it just an application of the F E or is there something?
Yeah, basically what we would do, yeah, what we would do is we would just modify our existing rental license, um, make it for short-term, and then to make it easy on our end, is we would send out those renewals the same time that we send out the typical rental renewal, so we're sending them all out in, at once, they're all renewed at the same time. Um, all of our inspectors are inspecting those at the same time, and it's just makes it much more cost-effective and saves time, um, by going that route if we do the license. So, yeah, I mean, I mean, within the, the draft, I mean, really what we have in here is just, you know, the license, the inspections, the lodging tax. We do have space and occupancy where we talk about the owner occupied, and you know, you could eliminate that. You could go to, um, primary residence only, you know, there's different directions you could go with that. Um, but then after that, we just talk about license suspension and revocation, um, and appeals. Um, so it's, you know, we don't have a lot of meat and potatoes in there right now, you know, it's really what I'm hearing, if it's the consensus that, you know, maybe the owner occupied isn't, you know, what we need to have in there, but I wanna hear other thoughts as well.
I believe the license system with the lodging tax would be sufficient, because a lot of the concerns that we've raised as far as littering or noise, these things are already illegal, we don't need to micromanage the property any further. If somebody litters on a lake frozen or otherwise, littering's illegal, and maybe that resident doesn't get tagged or flagged for that immediately. But the property owner will, and they'll know who they rented within a given month on what days, and that's gonna reflect negatively on their property, they're gonna try and pass that fee down to the tenant, because I'm sure there's gonna be some type of down payment that they need to make. And it's a self-rectifying situation, if there's noise issues, the police will respond, we don't need to layer on more rules for something that's already heavily managed, to be a host on a VRBO, Airbnb, there's typified guidelines that you need to adhere to, and if these hosts that wanna be a part of these websites don't abide to them, they won't be able to do that, so us just simply having a license, we can identify who in the community is gonna be doing this, getting that lodging tax, so then we can at least have a benefit to us as a city if we're gonna have to additionally manage these properties, not in a micromanagement style, but just manage them in general, that sounds sufficient to me.
I do like the, the way that Gina had set the primary resident for the owner occupied, just cause it does eliminate people coming in and potentially buying properties that.
They're just renting.
That's just gonna be.
Yeah.
If someone's responsible, you can say, oh, please call, but they're, there's only, and you said, you can call all you want, but they're renting to somebody, the owner owns it, they would have to go back, but the, they're not the ones who is the, the littering, the people that stayed there, so whether or not they're responsible or not, it could be weeks before it's addressed, those people are done and gone in a weekend, or.
I feel like we put it in there too, as like, primary owner occupied, it would help not only eliminate that issue, but, I mean, you're gonna have it too where you're not having people just coming and buying up the houses for rentals, or short-term rentals, so.
And that's, that, that is becoming a big issue in a lot of places that are a tie or a draw to certain locations.
Yeah, I think that the most of the year part, I think, is, I think.
That would still allow for snowbirds too, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I like that the most of the year part, not necessarily, to clarify that, it's gotta be owner-occupied.
So, uh, just make sure I'm understanding this correctly, do we, do we like going the route of having language in there that says that it has to be their primary residence? No? Okay, just owner occupy? Okay, so kind of how it's in there already is, oh, sufficient, and kind of what, kinda drafted in here?
Define, how do we define owner-occupied? Is that defined in the?
It.
Thank you, um.
Um, it's.
That just says it's owner-occupied, do we have a owner-occupied definition in the ordinance?
We can definitely add that, yeah.
Well, I, I'm just, I mean, I'm curious what it is, I mean, if it's, since it's town, I mean, is it?
It, it's, it's really the same as primary residence, it's just, it's, um, you know, that the owner is occupying that home the majority of the year, so it's their primary residence in a way.
So they don't have to be there if somebody else is there, that type of thing.
Yeah, so, you know, another thing we had in here too is, um, if we do, like, if the police go out there and respond to a call, um, a common thing in what other cities will do, even if it's a license process, is that there's a contact um, on there, probably two contacts for emergency, so then that way the police can get a hold of the responsible party and not deal with the tenants per se, and then they can follow up and address that, and I think that's important, um.
To your point, I mean, I mean, the, the events like Joe Town and, and that kind of stuff, the police are busy enough.
Yeah.
I mean, we, I mean, so it's gonna be harder for them to, you know, it's gonna be harder to get somebody to respond for something that is more of a annoyance than a real problem.
Yeah, and.
You know.
And the other issue that can result too is since it's gonna often be the police that are responding to these, cause it's off-hours that these concerns and things happen, is, um, also, you know, with the emergency contact, that they have something that's posted that, you know, signifies that's, you know, short-term rental or that, so they can kind of identify that, and you know, there's that boom, it's right there, and they have that info versus relying on a, you know, database that planning has or something like that, that's just not gonna always work, so.
So what, so for example, if someone, okay, they have short-term rentals, they are gone for winter, so they're renting it up, you know, right there, and there's been three calls, there are different renters each time for noise or parking or whatever, what is the city's policy on that? For that license hold event, what is the, like, you've now had three violations or whatever, you lose your license, or what is that policy on?
For our current, like, rental license, what's our policy?
Well, anything that requires, like, if it's a noise ordinance, right, and they're noisy. And they're, and they're, the tenant, or the people that are there are violating the noise law, um, ordinance, and so how many times?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things, uh, with that, so one, they can, they can cite, they can cite them. Um, two though, if it's a active rental license, then, um, the police, uh, try as best as they can to document that and then share that with community development, and then we put that as a strike, it depends on if a violation was confirmed or not. It depends on what extent of a violation it is, um, but then it's, you know, kind of a three-strike kind of policy, but we also have the ability, if it's a really egregious, like, violation and there's multiple things, um, going on, you know, we, within our ordinances, could potentially suspend their license, but they have the right to then appeal that and then go to the council to, you know, tell their side of the story or whatnot, so. Okay. So, I, I mean, within this draft, I didn't add language tied to suspension, you know, I added a little bit tied to revocation and denials. I didn't add anything defines and stuff like that, just because this is a, you know, still at, we're surface level conversation, but, um, you know, it, thoughts, you know, if, if, let's say we do have a, a violator, and, you know, it's clear, it's a violation and all that, you know, I mean, three-strike kind of policy, you know, still, is that, thoughts on that if we have issues? Um, or language tied to, you know, suspensions of their license, anything like that? Any feedback like that at this time?
I guess that's, for me, that's all the more reason to have maybe the licensing so that you have the record of who's in an entity on a yearly basis, so that if they are repeat offenders, violators, whatever it is, then you don't have to necessarily renew that license for them then, or you know, if it becomes an issue, you can take care of it that way as well.
I don't know, I, I just think of like, let's say if it was one of those homes that's right out the Minnesota street, you know, and they're or annoyed, or whatever it might be, or dealing with, how long would a neighbor, neighbors, cause it's not now just one, there's, you know, it's close proximity, how long would they have to be affected by someone that isn't abiding, you know, and, and then the person that owns that property, that, that's the only downside, it's, it's not like there's a lot of distance between the residents, they're right by each other, and it's not just one, it's, it's a handful, it's, it's people that have been, you know, so now it's how much are they gonna have to fight to, you know, is it a, well, you got, they got a year now for their license, or, well, they can go back to the council and ask it to be, you know, right of appeal, the decision, I, I just, I don't know, I'm just.
You're playing devil's advocate. You're playing devil's advocate.
Yeah, cause I could be, you know, you figure it might be near downtown, you know, like where it's a walking distance, and, you know, those, there, there's, that's a.
I just, I just think right now, like you said, you're in the infancy of it, and we don't wanna make a mountain out of a molehill yet. There's always the what-ifs, but to Adam's point, we also have ordinances in place for if stuff happens like that. I would say if you, you keep it simple with licensing, like we said, and you have the lodging tax, and like I said, you have the complaints, you're gonna very quickly know where the problem areas would be if there are concerns, but you really don't know until you do it, I mean, that's just my thought, but.
But is it necessary to do?
Gotta have something in there at least, if you want to do it.
One other question I had was just, um, you know, you see this in larger communities more so, but um, in those types of structures where you have like a multi-family, uh, residence, where you have, you know, like, let's say forty-eight units or whatnot, and one of the tenants wants to, you know, um, I don't know, maybe they're staying somewhere else for four months on a work-related thing, and they wanna then use their apartment as a short-term rental, and it's fine with their agreements and their, you know, tenant rights with their management and all that. Is there any, um, you know, concern in, uh, cause some communities will limit like how, like percentages of units that can be converted to short-term rental within like those buildings, you know, so that it retains residential units, um, and that you don't lose those residential units to a short-term rental user, or is that just like, we, we, you know, we don't care at this, at this stage, and I'm just throwing it out there, cause it's just other things that, you know, have come up that I've seen and such, so.
I would just say at this stage, it's not.
We can jump on that rabbit hole.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know about you guys, you guys have rented VRBOs or Airbnbs, you know, we do it with the family because it's easier and you have a whole living space. Where they're just asleep, and then we're, we're doing it almost like as a hotel, like it's not a getaway where we're gonna party, yes, you might have people that just rented to do it, but. We're gonna party, yes, you might have people that just rented to do it, but I know personally, that's what we use them for. Renting a whole house, which is cheaper than renting a.
And you get a kitchen.
And then you're there to pretty much sleep and do that and then go out to where you're going.
And and some, and some, you know, I I just from experience too, like some uh, they'll have, so they'll have their, you know, let's say their license displayed. So then you as a guest know that, okay, it's licensed, there's some protection there. And then they also have a real small cheat sheet of just like the general rules, like, you know, the nuisance types of stuff. You know, so you can kind of see that as you're checking in and getting your stuff as a a guest. But that gives also, I know, some reassurance to folks that, okay, it's licensed, it's been inspected, you know, um, here's some general rules, so. You know, it's just another way to communicate that to the tenants um, or those guests, so.
I mean, I think if we had, you know, to go back to your multi unit thing, if you had an apartment, if you had an apartment. You you got two things there, one, you've got the individual renters of that apartment, which I would think that we would wanna have, you know, if it's in a multi unit. Building that you don't own. You're gonna need your owners or your lease leasers approval on that form, on that permit application. Now, if you're in apartments, if you're a building owner or whatever, if you own the building and you wanna convert six units to short term rental units. That's a whole different, I mean, that's a whole, I would think that that would be a. They're not gonna approach that by, we're gonna just, because.
And to play devil's advocate, that's kind of the, what I was kind of like, gonna go down towards is if in those situations also when, yeah, you have the owner and they wanna. Flip those and convert those, is that a concern at this time? Do we need to address that now? Is there, you know?
And they would still have to provide, or they would still have to get the license, right, the short term rentals, you still have to go through the same processes, so.
Yeah, and we would, you know, if we, you know, uh, this ordinance, let's say it goes through or whatever and however many months and. Gets adopted and all that, you know, as if we get those applications in, when we get those applications in, we can kind of see the trends too, right? We can, oh, so and so wants to convert twenty units of their apartment and, you know, I mean, we would be able to. Kind of catch some of that, not saying it's gonna happen, but, yeah, okay.
That we wanna not allow it in, I noticed that was one of the things in the ordinance here, the under subdivision nine zoning. Man, I don't think there's anything that we need to necessarily exclude at this point.
I don't think so either.
Looks like that's the consensus, so, okay.
And just one, other than the owner occupied, we were talking about that earlier, that would only be for the residential side of things, right?
Yeah, correct. So, yeah, we we could put in language that would stake that in there.
All right, first, good there, Nate, we're fine there, I think?
Yeah, no, this is great feedback, so um, what I intend to do then, I'll come back, um, well, one other question. Public input, so, you know, this would come back in the terms of a ordinance amendment, which would then. Trigger a public hearing, um, is there anything else that the planning commission wants to do or direct staff to do? For public input on this, or is the sufficient process of, you know, going and having the standard public hearing? Okay, I just wanna get that input, because I may get asked that too, so.
The inquiry that we do have, probably, I mean, I'm assuming they have been. I mean, to get their take, I would say that it might be. We'll see if there's anything that their hangup might be perhaps with anything that we're proposing, I don't foresee anything, because I don't think we're. Putting a lot of restrictions on things, but, I mean, since that's what's starting this whole discussion, I think it might be kind of nice to. See what they're.
Sounds good to me. Cool, all right, well, um, we have a council workshop next Monday. Uh, so I will also share uh, the feedback that I heard tonight with the council and then Adam can relay anything I forget. No, it would just be real surface level, so we'll, we'll probably share this draft that we have and kind of um, explain uh, some of the feedback we heard tonight, so. Cool.
All right, then we'll uh, move on to the second item with old business, is the honeybee discussion?
Yes, all right, thanks Chair, uh, so um, you know, very similar, but um, probably even easier. Um, on this ordinance, so uh, what I did is uh, just um, drafted a uh, first reading. Draft of honeybees and added definitions um, that were applicable. Uh, added language that talks about where hives would be allowed, um, basically in any of those residential areas that we have. Um, some requirements, um, you know, there's probably overkill on on some of these, but it's a starting point. Um, I took a lot of what we had shared with um, the draft that um, Sartell had. Um, and kind of um, flipped that onto uh, this draft, you know, we talked about setbacks, uh, we talked about. What's called the flyaway barrier, um, we talked about in here having a. A sign that identifies that, you know, the property has, you know, bees. Um, the density, you know, really hoping to get some feedback on that. Um, from what I recollect and what we talked about last month, hopefully some of that reflects, um, but really wanna get feedback. On the density stuff, um, what may or may not require permits, um, if we require a permit. You know, more of an administrative permit, um, do we need to require permits? I'm just looking for feedback. On that and all the above as it relates to the draft, so. I will open it up. On things that stood out to commission members.
I don't really believe a permit should be required, because I understand these bees aren't pets, but like, you don't need a permit to have a dog. A cat or like any other type of animal, livestock, insect or otherwise on somebody's property. And if somebody wants to make an attempt at this commercially, whether they have a lot of acreage or not, that's where things like. Um, getting licenses from the state will be triggered, like if you wanna be a homemaker from home. Making stuff where you're not covered by like. Bullshit or like any regulatory body, I just, I don't think a permit would really be necessary for this.
Do we have licenses for dogs and cats and stuff?
We eliminated it, yeah.
Three years ago. And looking at your attachments. The uh, model ordinance minute uh, from Minnesota Beekeepers, that ordinance, it contained a lot of good stuff in it, you know, but to Adam's point, I don't think you need. I don't think you need to permit it, like the standard practices in here is kind of cool, you pretty much have the same. For the colony density, you pretty much have it verbatim what they have in here as well. And then regardless of lot sizes, at least a two hundred feet from any hive, you know, they have like, there's a lot of good stuff reading there.
So we were saying the ordinance would still be in effect, but we wouldn't have necessarily have a permit to have those. That's kind of what we're.
How it would work is if we got like, let's say we got a complaint, um, and we still had these density requirements, we would just make sure that they're following. Those, so there'd still be, you know, follow up that we could do, um, you know.
Be there if you have hives, the signage should still be there to follow.
Yeah, if if that's what we include in the ordinance, yeah.
Adam, you might know this, though, the presumed colony hive value, like they say, purpose of presumed value is like two hundred and seventy five dollars a hive, or like colony. If you don't have any honeybees, because they don't make it through the winter and need to start fresh in the spring. What people can buy is like just your queen bee, and then you'll have a whole bunch of worker bees support and follow that queen bee, or you can buy something like. An actual colony where you buy a nuke, and a nuke is a queen bee with like five thousand worker bees. Comes in a little box and they'll literally ship it to you USPS.
Crazy.
To get like a nuke, a queen bee with worker bees to start your established hive in the spring once the snow melts. Those typically run a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Because in theirs, you know, like if someone damages it, do you need to put something in that ordinance that says, hey? For purposes of enforcing city ordinance against destruction of property, each colony hive shall be presumed to have a value of two seventy five. Is that something you put in there too, just?
Well, that's, that'd be like the noted worth or like valued cost for a place one if you're starting fresh.
Okay.
As they work through the summer and the queen produces new cells and like. New larvae and new bees, they grow their size to about fifty to a hundred thousand bees. So the value of the hive, the bees, the honey, the framework they built on everything, it could approach a thousand dollars a hive.
I just didn't know if you had to put something in there in case someone destroys it or. Got a bear that wanders through the city.
And it, like in the ordinance, like if someone destroys the. No, it'd just be a private property that they.
Yeah, I just think it was interesting, because they had that actually in the, the Minnesota Hobby Beekeepers Association, like the Model Beekeeping Ordinance.
Is there anything like that where they just? Don't wanna do with the hive, just leave it there or?
Uh, I have seen that, I have seen that, like where they, yeah, abandoned hives that you should remove any that are, you know, but. Yeah, that has, I have seen it, yeah.
Yeah, I just thought that was interesting, I ask, cause.
It was a very interesting, it was very interesting. Yeah, I I would agree with that, no government needed, I think. I like the density and stuff you've got, you know, if you wanted to simplify it and just go to. You know, uh, you could go to four under an acre and get rid of those two middle ones or something like that, but I I think it's fine.
Yeah, to Adam's point, if someone wants to do it, they're gonna have to go through other avenues to really.
Working as like a cottage. What Keith is asking me is, um, what if somebody wants to sell things? And then that's where you'd get triggered into probably applying for a cottage baker license. And not that you're necessarily, you can bake stuff with honey, but like, if you're just selling coal, if you're just selling honey. Even though you're not baking anything, you'd still be applicable to needing that license.
So we have, you know, our home occupation permits, um, and within that standard. There's some things that trigger and are called special home occupations, and those are the ones that the planning commission sees and that you review, like the massage. Therapy place that we had a few months back, but some are just permitted and then some aren't permitted, so depending on what they're doing. Um, you know, if they're opening up a retail store on site, like that's gonna trigger other things, if they're just selling it out their home and shipping things. You know, that's not gonna trigger any kind of requirements, so it just depends on what they're doing with the product.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah. Also, good work on putting it on seven B.
On what?
Sorry, I.
Seven B on the agenda, that is.
Of course, of course, I knew you'd catch that. Um, the two other ones, uh, you know, I don't wanna go line by line on this, because I got really good feedback and I got a direction, but. Um, you know, we had in there that each beekeeper show ensure that water is available within so many feet of the hive, I mean. I don't know, thoughts on that, and then that the hives uh, that are made out of wood should be painted, sealed or stained. That's just to match our fence and our other kind of standards for that, I don't, any preferences on those things? I don't know.
Most of the hives don't typically have like a sealant painter barrier put on the outside of them, like for the health of the hive. Some people will paint them for pretty aesthetic, but like, it's not a mandatory thing as far as the general practice of beekeeping. A lot of people use raw wood.
I think, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I think it's gonna be, I mean, best practices are gonna rule in most of these. Because the people that are doing it are doing it because they've got a genuine interest and.
We don't care what the hives, if they're painted or things like that, right?
Only thing that I experienced, if there was a hive in my place. Is that they infested the pool, so anybody in town, if neighbors have a pool, that's a huge water source. And literally, they were so bad I couldn't get in the pool, they were, that may be a blight around.
A- and I actually think that that's why some cities have that water source in there, so then the water source is on site and they're not going to.
Kids might have a problem if they was some bees are surrounding it and the kids are getting stung. Anything with bees. You're gonna provide a water source for them.
We never provide a water source, because your concern about being near pools. Bees are more particular about water than humans, they're not gonna drink from a chlorinated pool.
They drink from pool, I like, they surrounded it, I had a salt pool, salt chlorinator, but still boring. I don't know.
I mean, I have microplastics in my blood, these don't, like they're looking for the cleanest water possible.
Um, they were there.
So am I here to keep that or eliminate that?
I think you can get rid of it.
Like you said, the people that wanna do this probably know what they're doing.
Okay, eliminate. Okay.
Yeah, I know. I saw the beach.
Fucking water over here at all, little bit of fucking water.
All right. Anything else in the honeybee discussion? Now we'll move on to seven C, the general updates.
Yeah, just a couple, um, first one, the House of Hearn synergy site over there. Uh, where we're at with that is um, basically on the final last thing for the site plan stuff, we're just awaiting a written. Response from their engineer on our comments, and we've already verbally already talked about, everything's uh, been addressed basically. Uh, but one thing that they're working on is with Excel Energy, um, so Excel Energy is supposed to have some linesmen go out there this week, I believe. Um, and mark it up, um, there's a distance that they have to be uh, from those overhead lines, and that's ten feet. Um, so with the building being close and all that, um, there's gonna be adjustments that are gonna need to be made. Um, uh, one of the more easier solutions is there's a power pole on. The southeast uh, corner, so right on the corner of Second and Minnesota, um, right now that power pole is. Kind of right in the middle of what the accessible path will be, um, so moving that power pole over closer to the curb. Provides a clearer accessible route of adequate width, and then also gives them a couple of extra feet, because every foot counts. Um, so they're looking at um, doing that and and working through that.
Dude, who incurs the cost of that?
That's the applicant. Yeah, I know applicant would be responsible for, you know, if if Excel, it depends on what Excel, you know, would require if if the applicant. Needs that separation, which they do, um, then they would be responsible to coordinate that and enact that and, you know, pay for applicable costs tied to that. What some communities do, um, and this might be a conversation that comes up at the council eventually is. Um, I know I'm aware of Stock Rapids, so they have also uh, power. Lines that go through parts of uh, their commercial areas and that, and as our downtown area grows. And as we, you know, you know, maybe get more commercial businesses and others, you know, and that growth occurs. We're gonna have more buildings that are closer to the street, that this is gonna be a issue that, you know, could pu- come up again. Um, so they will uh, underground those utility lines. But how that works is um, at least through Excel's um, purview is. Um, they'll underground those lines, but then they do it on a project by project basis, so they'll take like, maybe like. A a block or two blocks and they'll underground those, and the cost of the undergrounding then gets flipped over to the. Consumers actually of Excel, so all the Excel consumers in the, in the community then get a surcharge. Um, usually that surcharge, I think in Stock Rapids has been like the same amount over the years. So as they are going through different projects and say the most recent project gets completed, the power lines are underground. They actively look for other projects to continue, um, so they have a active surcharge that's kind of at that same amount. And it doesn't disappear and then two years later come back, so, you know, um, at the council level, it might be worth exploring. And having conversation with Excel on how exactly that would work, um, to be proactive, um, because if we get more of these, it's gonna be a case by case. Thing, um, but maybe it makes sense. Um, but maybe it makes sense to look at a block or two blocks of our expanded downtown, try to underground some stuff. Um, you know, uh, and from what I understand, it's a pretty minimum charge when you apply it across the spectrum of all the consumers, you know, five dollars or six, or it just depends on the amount of, you know, land that you're undergrounding and, and other factors, so. Um, I was gonna chat more with Excel um, reps on that. You know, for example, if we took um, you know, from Second over to the west one block, like what would that look like from a cost standpoint? And then what would that look like from a surcharge standpoint on any consumers and such, you know, we're talking three dollars a month, five dollar, like what would that be? So. I don't know that.
Borderline replacement and pool replacement stuff going on, I'm curious as to how old the stuff is downtown, because.
Good question.
Sure does make sense to move stuff when it's gonna be reworked in the first place, yes, I know there's more costs of putting it underground, but if they're replacing it anyways, I would think that the cost that would be transferred on would be ideally would be less, I, I don't know, I, just a thought.
Yeah, so I mean, we're kind of trying to explore that, um, and how can we be proactive in that, so. Um, but tha- that FYI, that's where House of Hearn is at for that one. Um, what was on the, originally on the agenda that I yanked, that will come back later probably is the wedding event venue, um, so I totally spaced this, but when they went to the council, um, the council had adopted their resolution and they're finding a fact on September fifth of last year. Um, but then they came back to the council, um, uh, cause a couple of conditions got amended or eliminated. And they came back in November, so the CUP is actually good till November twentieth of this year, not September, so it gives them a couple of extra months, but um, yeah, I still see an extension request, it just depends on what they can accomplish between now and um, prior to that date. So, um, other update I have is um, what was called the Tyler Bregelman Project, the one where there's multiple buildings in that. Uh, where they say we're gonna be issuing site plan approval uh, this week, so then they'll move them on to building permit and then um, construction. So you'll see some more stuff moving out there, Hanson and Company will be breaking ground really any day. So, um, yeah, some good projects, um, gonna be breaking ground out there and then Good and Company, um, we might be doing a grand like ribbon cup, ribbon cutting sometime this month, so. Good stuff happening, um, still trying to facilitate some housing, um, have a couple of meetings this week uh, in regards to housing and infill projects, kind of your low hanging fruit, so we'll see where those go.
Property that was sold over by Dollar General?
Yeah, yep, so uh, I don't know if it was officially sold, I know it was like on the finish line of that, um, but yes, that one you might see. I think that one might trigger CUP, um, it's kind of a odd CUP though, because um, in our highway district, we have conditional uses for uh, I think it's like office type of use or something like that, and it triggers a conditional use, but there's really not a lot of applicable conditions that would probably apply to that one, but yeah.
It's not, it's retail.
Y- yeah, and I can't remember the exact use for that one and which one is the one, but I know it, it triggers a, a CUP, but it's talks about like interior stuff and it's y- y- yeah, yeah, I think it might be the warehousing actually, yeah, yep, so that triggers CUP, but they're not gonna have any outside storage, they're not gonna have it, you know, so those conditions I would anticipate are gonna be, you know, very minimum, I don't even know what we put on there to be honest, cause it's just interior warehousing. Um, with some, I think it's some office space, so yeah, that, that one might be forthcoming, um, we'll see, um, but what else, um?
Yeah, by Coburn's or the roundabout.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, there's, there's more right away wrinkles that have come up, um, in regards to that, so the state or the county has to um, square away all the right away and then send those plans to the state, and then the state has to approve it, and then you go off for bidding. Well, we had an issue with one of the properties with right away, and that took couple of months at least, um, and there's been another one that's come up that's, so, we're still hoping that um, we can move forward uh, with that project, but the longer it drags out and the later we get into July and now August is around the corner, um, you know it may be delayed to next year, well, we just have to see on how that plays out. So, we will see, more to come, but it that way.
The roundabout at two would be going on the same time.
Potentially, that's slated for June first to June fifteenth next year. Is there a date in which the county has decided that if they can't get their right ways accomplished, that it will be kicked the next year, is there a date where the?
I'm sure they do have kind of a timeline, cause they probably have, um, from bidding to construction, they probably have that full timeline. I'm not sure what that is though, and what that length would be, so I, I'm sure though, they've probably have an idea though on that determination.
So it hasn't even gone off bids yet?
Yeah, hopefully we can still, you know, keep things going, yeah.
All right, and anything else, I would just, uh, if we don't have any, that's it for general updates that you had?
Yeah, that's all I have.
All right, so then, uh, I guess we're just looking for uh, no, no other business, unless anybody else has anything?
I have an update on cannabis, uh, Rick Schultz, our mayor, was at the Capitol during our legislative session, met with a lot of different people. And the Office of Cannabis Management, the OCM has been established, we've been waiting for that to occur, so there could be some type of oversight and regulation to a lot of the businesses that people are looking to propose. Um, I had offered up in jest that Saint Joseph should have a municipal dispensary, and I was actually serious when I said that, but that won't, any um, talk or discussion that won't occur this year, because Stearns County has passed the moratorium for the whole county. And that may be to the benefit of most of us, because even though our OCM is established it looks like an utter mess, like they, they have the office established and they have people employed by the state. But they just cannot define what they want for language, how they wanna tax things, how they wanna issue licenses. Whether municipal dispensaries can be established by city or not, if that inhibits them all business, you may have like per capita for your population base, so our state government has our overseeing committee, the OCM, but like, nothing's gonna happen this year.
Did you say Stearns has more toward until twenty-five, so what is?
Through the end of the year.
One thing that eventually the PC might weigh in on again is appropriate zoning districts. So, just um, keep that in the, the back of your head and that, and think about that a little bit, so.
Got a motion to second all in favor? All right, we're adjourned.
Thanks, everyone, for the feedback.